Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Select Board. It is Monday, November 1st.
Ladies and gentlemen.
But we could have everyone please pull up a seat. Now I have a roll call to start the meeting for attendance purposes.
Uh, January 334 Old Constance Temple.
Dan Dancheck, 353 Sweeney Pond Road.
George Bailey, Chesley Drive.
Andrew Knapp, Lindsley Point Road. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to start, start this meeting this evening with a moment of silence in remembrance of New Hampshire State Police Staff Sergeant and Barrington resident Jesse Sherrill. Thank you, everyone. The agenda, review and approval. Is there any, anything that needs to be added to the agenda or anything that someone might have removed? Select person there?
I'm not ready to go over the call and everything till we get all of the Bob and Ted's presentation on budget. So we can see where we're at.
Okay, I think we can discuss that item when we get to it to see if there's a decision to be made or not at that time. Anything else? Approval of the agenda?
Take my motion.
Excuse me.
A second.
Take most of the approval.
Seconded by select person. Roll call vote, air eye.
Bailey, aye.
Now, aye. First of two public comments. If you're participating virtually and you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand or enter a comment into the chat feature to let the chair know you'd like to speak. If you're on a phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. You have to speak up, wait to be recognized by the chair. Be a second public comment towards the end of the meeting. Nothing coming through on my end, Mr. Chair? At this time, I will close public comment. We have no public hearings this evening.
None.
The consent agenda. There were two items that I just wanted some clarification on, on the consent agenda. Is the board amenable to discussing them quickly right now?
I am.
The first item, there were two lots that are, were specifically referred, or three lots specifically referenced to New Hampshire DOT. It was sale of map lots 111-111, 113-23, and then 113-34. That were from the planning board, two of them are to, the 113, 23, and 34 were to, are the two properties that about Swains Lake. And then the other one map, 111-10. Did I get the number wrong on that one?
Those are Flower Drive.
Oh, Flower, oh, I'm sorry. It was not Flower Drive. It was, it was, yeah, the map. Um, 126-29. Had a note to offer it only to New Hampshire DOT, but it doesn't provide any clarification as to what we're, the board are recommending to do with that because what I saw was to offer to a Butters.
Um, that was a part of the original Town Lands Committee recommendation to offer it. They originally recommended offering it to Department of Transportation or the Lake Association.
Right.
And we learned that there wasn't a formal Lake Association. So the, that's the recommendation that the Select Board supported at the, before the 4114A process started.
Was the New Hampshire DOT.
Was to offer it to DOT. So that's a lot that they have, uh, number of years ago, maybe 10, they installed some pretty significant drainage.
Right.
Infrastructure along it, and so it's not really useful for anything else. The fire department wanted to investigate it to have potential fire water access, but because of the steep grade, there's not really any room to get a fire truck off the road.
And the ones near Swains, it's off for fishing game.
I'm sorry, fishing game, not DOT.
And then DOTs. The agencies.
I, I was good with that. I just wanted to make sure that, um, that that was called out in there just because it wasn't completely clear. That was just, just for the consent agenda discussion. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure that it was going to Hampshire DOT and that the other one was to fishing game.
The other two lots.
I'm good with the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything else that they wanted to discuss on it?
As an informational purposes. Fish game had interest, but their procedures are like going through all this, take the piles off.
Yep.
So you wouldn't really talk tomorrow.
Right.
Take a couple days.
Here's. Yes, select person Bailey.
I, on item G, final vote regarding our state 4114A. Uh, that's taking care of the vote for consent.
Yes, this will be taken care of with our vote for consent.
Thank you.
So is everyone good with the consent agenda?
I'm over accept consent agenda.
Seconded. Roll call vote, air eye.
I'm sure I got it.
Bailey, aye.
Now, aye. Appointments. Mr. Tyler.
Chief, Chief Joy to.
And Chief Joy will be doing the, uh, the pin, promotional pinning ceremony.
On July 26th, 2021, which would classify the deck of conditions from grade eight to a grade 10 in order to be more consistent with the roles and responsibilities of that position. That position was filled internally and August 10th, 2021, D.C. Brooks and I started a promotional process for new sergeant. In a multiple phase process, which consisted of a written test, an oral board, and an inbox. If anybody wants to know what an inbox is, I'm happy to answer that afterwards. During the oral board, it's important to note that we had three members at the outside sitting, two sergeants from Kalia certified agencies, and one lieutenant from very respected agency in the area. Not to take away from Officer Courier. The lieutenant in question said that he'd been sitting a lot of promotional boards lately and had never seen candidates like he saw. So you can only promote one, obviously, but all the candidates involved were extremely high quality and I'm very, very proud of them all. That said, on October 25th, Deputy Chief Brooks and I advised Officer Tyler Courier that he'd be assuming his role of sergeant effective today. Tyler started his holding, should we say, as a Navy corpsman, approximately five years, been with the Barrington Police Department since 2019, started as a police officer in Nottingham. During his time at Barrington, he's never let up on his own training. He quickly became a drug recognition expert, which is one of the harder schools that New Hampshire Police Center's training offers, and never backed down from his training to hone his skills as a patrolman. Well, respected by both his peers and his supervisors, and he's definitely earned the right to be standing in front of the young today. I'd like his wife, Jordan, to come up, please, that I got the name correct. Tyler's also joined tonight by his mother-in-law Karen Le Duke and his father-in-law Ed Le Duke in the audience. If you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tyler Courier.
I, Tyler Courier.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly, sincerely, and thoroughly affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
I will faithfully, partially.
Discharge.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
Upon me as a police sergeant.
Upon me as a police sergeant.
For the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
Town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules.
Agreeable to the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
This I do.
This I do.
Under the pains, penalties, and perjury.
Under the pains, penalties, and perjury. Congratulations.
If only he could pick a dog as good as he did with things. All right, 2022 budget presentations. We have the recreation here this evening. Jesse?
Uh, so my name is Jessica Tettis, and I am the Recreation Director for the town of Barrington. Um, so our budget is, uh, basically consists of wages, benefits, and the earned time buyout. Um, but I think it was important to kind of show everybody, uh, so part of the community, people who don't utilize the Rec Department, what we do on a day-to-day basis, as most people who don't have children, um, or participate in our adult programs really see some of these activities and don't necessarily know what they entail. Um, so I've just put together a very short and sweet presentation to just go over the line items, but I also just created a little bit of a, um, video so that you guys can kind of just see what we've been doing. Um, this video did have music, but it doesn't sound like that might not come.
It will.
It will, okay, perfect. Okay. If not, it's just a video with no music, and I apologize.
I'm along with it.
Right? Sorry, it's gonna be so.
Well, it's a nice sideshow.
Thanks. It was a lot better with the music, but.
George will. There you go.
Maybe not.
Maybe not, okay.
We can send them all to YouTube.
Yes, perfect.
Post it to the site.
Yes. So we just went through and just basically kind of showed what some of the use ports are that we offer. So these are the flag football, um, program that just wrapped up. We just wrapped up our soccer.
That's a great picture.
We had the fire department come this summer and spray the kids with the hoses, which was great. Kids actually loved that event, especially not being able to go on field trips this summer. So this was one of the highlights that they really looked forward to.
Hope everybody uses the side.
Don't realize how bright the old floor was until you see.
Yeah.
That curling program.
Wow.
Wonderful tracks program. This is my minivan once a week.
That's a, that's a bench.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. So that was all the plastic that we recycled for the bench.
We really had to kill a few baby seals to make it.
Yeah.
We saved baby seals.
Saved baby seals.
That was on the first day of school, yep. I promise, the music made it much more exciting.
I think the pictures are great.
I know.
That was super.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you, is that on like public YouTube?
Um, it's on Sarah's YouTube, but we can go ahead and we can send it to you guys.
Oh, for sure.
That's it.
I think that would be super, um, for, yeah, to put out there. I mean, that's a good, like promotional, look what the rec program does.
That was, uh. My wife actually even had a question about one of the recs to there. She was like.
That's super.
Apparently you guys run, like, on the days that school is off, you run the full program?
Yeah, the can day off camps, yeah.
When, how do you, how and when do you sign up?
Give us a plug.
We were looking.
Yeah, so we typically always advertise like six to eight weeks in advance, um, and we do it on like the website, Facebook, those type of things. Um, but you guys can probably just register right online because you're in the system, so, yeah.
I know she was looking, looking at it. Because of having tomorrow off.
Yeah.
The gym's tomorrow. And she was asking, she was asking about it. She's like, how do I get on? I said, I don't know the answer to that.
But I can find out.
Yeah, well, tell her to give us a call. We can definitely go ahead and get him in, absolutely. So, um, so to just go over the Rec Department really quick. So taking into consideration COVID, we just wanted to kind of just emphasize that, um, at this point, we have been able to kind of get back to our normal programming schedule. Um, we're still utilizing and working very closely with the SAU department. Um, but between, um, all of the programs that we offer all year round, we have a total of 32 programs for this upcoming, or for this past year. Um, from January to October, we had a total of 3,966 participants with anticipating ending right around, uh, 4,622 participants, um, for the end of the year. Um, and then just letting you guys know that we had kind of gone back to our previous, uh, pre-COVID, um, programming and that we're really excited to kind of get back out and see our participants. Fall Fest was really exciting for us. We've been really missing everybody and it was exciting to kind of get back into our, back into our element and see everybody, which was really great, so. Um, like I had stated at the beginning, the beginning, um, our budget just consists of salaries, wages, so wages, benefits, and earned time buyout, um, for a total of $182,756. And you can see on this breakdown kind of like what each, um, line is kind of, you know, given or allotted. Uh, and then we have the $11 and the placeholders for the, um, old line items that the Rec Department, or the Recreation Commission was willing to kind of move into the revolving fund. Any questions on this at all? Um, and then I just wanted to just do a quick recap. Uh, during the COVID shutdown, the Rec Commission and the employees were able to utilize the resources, uh, and the time during shutdown to kind of address some of the projects that we have, um, kind of earmarked. Um, at this point, we have finished the resurfacing of the gym floor, and as of today, the new bleachers have been installed and they look very, very nice. Um, yeah, we're small but steady strides. Um, we have the shade structures and the benches that will be going in on the playground. The benches will be coming in, um, probably right in the spring, but the shade structure should be going up in November. Um, and then we just got the approval to move forward with the rectum walls, which were anticipating the construction window of February to April of 2022. Um, and just mentioning that all those projects were paid for out of the revolving fund with no impacts for the community or its residents. Uh, I just think that that's important to kind of mention. Um, we continue to work collaboratively with the SAU and other town departments to consistently monitor and change the, and kind of adapt to the hurdles that are caused by COVID-19. As soon as you get something under wraps, it changes and you're kind of revamping from the ground up. Um, so the staff have been doing a really great job on that. Um, and then we just continue to utilize our need assessment and strategic plan to evaluate all of our rec programs, um, and continue to promote as much community collaboration as possible. Um, an example of this would be the townwide egg hunt that we did, uh, the Fall Festival, we had vendors coming in. Uh, we're going to be participating in the soiree again this year. So that was something that was really mentioned in that need assessment strategic plan. Um, we feel like we were able to kind of take that COVID shutdown and really kind of hone in on that, which has been really nice. And that's it. That's it. So, any questions?
Anything from the board? I have an unrelated question from the budget. The shade structures, those are the, the large canvas structures that hang?
Yeah, so it's a single post, single, and then it has the two 10 by 20 awnings on both sides. So we got two of those, and then there's one that had, it's just one awning and a 10 by 10 shade structure, so.
Are you planning to take them down for the winter months or leave them?
So we're gonna, the, um, actual, like, shade structures themselves, we have a company that they're gonna, when they put them up, I'm gonna have them put them up without the shade structures this year, put them up after the winter, but every year we'll have them come in, take them down, and we'll store them in the new shed that we have.
Okay. I just want, didn't want to see, I, I know the snow, um, if they, you get a heavy snow load on them, it'll rip them and.
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't want to see your new, newly, uh.
Yeah.
Equipment end up destroyed.
Yeah, yeah, that was something that we had considered. They also reassured us that they're, they can hold up to the new weather as long as you're going out and kind of hitting the snow off, but to do our due diligence, we just made sure that we have that company that will come in and take them down, put them up every year for us, just so that way they can get the most lifetime out of them, so.
Yeah, I know, uh, a few years ago when we had the really heavy Halloween snowstorm.
Yeah, yep.
Um, anybody that had anything canvas that was still up.
Yeah.
Um, ended up pretty much destroyed.
But it was so heavy. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. Well, hopefully.
Everything.
Yeah.
Select person there?
Dry snow weighs 440 pounds a yard. Wet snow weighs 880, doubles.
Well, thank you for that tidbit of information.
Well, they won't be out to collect any snow, wet or dry snow. Be all set.
Thank you very much for the hard work you and the Recreation Department and all your staff. Advisory Budget Committee, do we have anyone here?
Yeah.
Steve.
Yeah, he's right behind. Oh, I, sorry, Steve, I didn't see you sitting behind the flag back there. All right. Any commentary that you wanted to ask of the Rec Department?
But. Maybe discuss other things.
The Advisory Budget Committee did?
They did.
Okay, are there additional items the Advisory Budget Committee would like to discuss?
Well, there's a couple of agenda items that Steve might want to speak to, the staffing, uh.
And the.
And the step in COLA, so old business A and B.
Okay, great. Very good. And then we have, uh, Sam Rhonda, Library Trustee, alternate discussion. Discussion from the board.
I, I assume that he actually missed Mark. You obviously a library trustee is.
Not the, uh, not the cemetery trustee.
Yeah, so we received word that there might actually be a glitch with the form when you fill it out electronically. Um, and so that's why he had crossed out the cemetery trustee and definitely wanted library trustee.
Any other discussion or?
I understand he's been attending the, uh, library meeting, so he is. Where. Very much involved with this. I would think at our, at our appropriate next meeting.
Yes, we will vote on him.
Yep.
Staff reports?
Yes, thank you. So here we are, first of November, first meeting in November. I'm glad to present seven work anniversaries for you. Um, incredible tenure, uh, look forward to many more, each of them, uh, starting with the longest tenure, John Janelle in the Fire Department, 23 years. Aaron Paradise has been in town for 13 years for work assignments, transfer station administrator and highway support assistant. Uh, Richard Smith has been with the Fire Department for nine years. Um, that's a, that's an error and omission. Mr. Ballion, uh, no longer works for the town, although he's a terrific resource. He accepted the welfare director position in the city of Dover. He's a very busy guy. Um, but he answers our calls anytime when we have questions or concerns, so. He was, he's on there by mistake, but I'm glad he is.
And his non-anniversary.
I'm glad he is because, thank you. Um, Abigail Clark, Recreation Department, five years. Terrence Glazier was hired in the transfer station two years ago, and our Peter Curtin, one of the full-time fire EMS, uh, in the Fire Department, has been in town for one year. And that's all that I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Municipal Office Administrator, Connor.
Um, I just sent out two private road agreements that are not requiring a full process. We'll get those individually. Um, one is for two different funds.
All right. Select person there? You had your hand up a second ago.
Connor corrected itself.
Okay. Under old business, 2022 budget step and COLA.
We want to, yeah, give a quick introduction. So, um, the, I think the Select Board, uh, two years ago started the process of, uh, making a decision about stepping COLA, uh, as early in the budget process as, uh, reasonable in order to have that decision and, and frame the rest of the budget around it. Um, that's a recommendation that was supported by the Budget Committee at the time, and I think has worked very well, um, to have some, uh, regularity in the budgeting, be able to move the pieces in a responsible way throughout the process. Um, early, the last two years, we've done it earlier than November, uh, but I think it was important, um, the Select Board wanted to review the three kind of staffing increase presentations prior to making a decision. So a couple of meetings ago, we decided to address the staffing decisions, um, and the step in COLA at the November 1st meeting. Um, so the, uh, on the, uh, step side, the pay plan established with the 2019 compensation study has 13 steps with a 35% calculated range spread. Um, the pay plan, or the, uh, compensation study recommends a progression along that plan to keep wages current with the labor market. A, a step increase is included with the, uh, proposed budget, the 2022 proposed operating budget, and, uh, the wages and benefits associated with that step increase represent $68,000 of the budget increase. Uh, the compensation study also addressed the cost of living adjustment. This is a conversation that started much sooner than, um, the budget process, uh, because it was important to the Select Board to have some methodology with the cost of living. So we started discussing it in July. Um, we honed in, um, a little bit closer throughout the year to look at the social security cost of living adjustment, um, which is what the Select Board decided, and then that was announced at 5.9%. Um, the budget as presented represents a 2.5% cost of living increase. Um, I, I had mentioned the social security was 5.9% and the Stratford County CPI data, um, reflects a 4.3% increase. Um, there's been a lot of talk over the, um, municipal managers forum about what is being included in budgets for cost of living, um, and almost all of them have been higher than 2.5%. Most of them have policies which reflect some combination of the social security and/or CPI data. Um, 2.5% was what was included in the budget. I think that's a, a very reasonable request, um, and I think it's, um, essential that we keep our pay plan current with the labor market, um, that, uh, as recommended by the compensation study. The 2.5% value was, uh, also unanimously recommended by the Budget Committee, um, and so that's include, already included in the 2022, um, operating budget as presented and represents $64,000, uh, dollars in wages and benefits. Um, so like I said, the Budget Committee, um, reviewed the information and unanimously recommended the step allowance and 2.5% cost of living. Um, so our collective hope is that the Select Board will make a decision tonight that will allow us to, um, finalize those numbers in the budget and move on to the rest of the review.
Select person there?
For me personally, it's too early. All the departments come in, you figure the preservation stuff, and as of right now, it looks like the town hall made over $400,000. So we don't have a, any idea of the funding. So we don't have a, any idea of the funding to go through Congress, can't seem to make up their idea, idea what's going on yet. And I just keep back my mind, if all cards are on the table, what we're doing, I think too early to make a vote tonight.
Select person Bailey?
I have a question for Connor, if you don't mind, sir. That $64,000, Connor?
Yes, sir.
That's all departments, including ones that haven't submitted?
Yes, that's the entire budget.
Thank you.
Select person, Mantrick?
Is, again, I think Connor may be able to answer this. Is the combination of steps and the cola closer to the real inflation rate when we put them together?
Yes. The step for non-union employees is 2.75% over the 13 steps. That's why you get to 35% for union employees. It's 3.75%. And so the two and a half percent combined with the cost of living adjustment, two and a half percent, that puts us right close to the 4.3 to 5.9.
5.2% is what it puts you at, correct?
Well, it's different for the, the two labor classes.
Right, but for, for the non-labor class, it's a 5.2%. Union, I forget what the negotiated rate was on that.
6.25%.
So, I mean, my general comment on it is, is nowhere in private industry are you guaranteed a 5% raise year over year, but.
I, I would suggest that's why, uh, one of the reasons that private industry is having trouble hiring people because they suddenly realized that you don't get to raise cola or something to bring you up to the inflation rate, you're actually decreasing your effective wages. I want to make sure that we're not doing that for our employees.
Which we're not.
I appreciate that.
Just ask a question. I would like to ask Steve for commentary or to come participate in the conversation.
Yeah, from a, the Budget Committee discussion that we had, we pretty much felt that at this point in time, it's very appropriate, especially with inflation accelerating, to not penalize the employees if we had, if we could. And that we wouldn't recommend that the budget be prepared with these as their assumption, the two and a half percent cola and the step increase. Recognizing that once we know what the revenue projections are and have a better handle on the rest remainder of the budget, including warrant articles and everything else, we may have to change our decision. This, this would be what we think is the fairest way to approach the budget from a employee compensation perspective.
So are you saying you folks may change your decision on the fact that a two and a half percent cola is not?
I think we're going to be at the, at the end, when we get all the warrant articles and everything together, we'll have to prioritize what can be included within the budget itself and within funding for some of the warrant articles. And then what has to be put on additional requests for the, that impact tax rate to, to the population. And we may have to revise our recommendation down. But I think that, I probably think that employee compensation is a very important thing for the town to, to recognize that we need to to address and include if we can.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you. We have a list of the employees in the last 18 months that have left us to go to work with somebody else that have stated to the, on their exit interview that they're going because they want more money. Do you have anything like that available?
Most have cited compensation as a, in the exit interviews that I performed. And, but prior to the last two years before I started performing exit interviews, exit interviews weren't performed consistently. So there's not regular data to your point. But I think the, most recently, the employees that have left us are, are taking full-time positions in other industries or communities have been, have cited wages.
So they were on part-time and went full-time?
Well, we've had, you know, most recently, we had a part-time employee in the fire department that we were hoping might be a candidate for full-time that, that went full-time in another community.
Thank you.
Additional commentary, select person, Mantrick?
Yeah, I, it seems to me we're asking for a vote on this. I think based on what Steve had to say, that I think if we just get a general understanding and accept that and then wait till, till the whole budget is, is ready and look at the warrant articles, rather than making a firm decision tonight that we're going to do this. I think this is more guidance than it is. I think we want to wait until the end.
I would agree with that. Especially based on the, the feedback the Advisory Budget Committee is putting forward and. Okay.
So the consensus is to leave the step budgeted and the 2.5%.
To leave it as it is and we will vote on it toward the, at the end of the budget. Understood?
Hope there's not a midnight trail.
Just make sure you get a, get a nap in that before that meeting, George.
I will, I will make that a note for my task to do.
Um, the 2022 proposed staffing changes for the budget?
So this is that second item that we talked about. There's three, basically three staffing increases that the select board has, has reviewed. And the goal here is to have the select board make the decision whether they're included in the budget, whether you'd like to see them included in the budget or not. Obviously, we've had a few meetings on fire and police, and I think the select board has, has essentially made those decisions. But we're, we're reviewing them all in collectively right now. So you've got fire EMS, the numbers reflect the decisions the select board have made. Remember, we started the budget process with requesting two positions to start in April in the fire department. And so that, you know, essentially reflects 150% of, of FTE from a budgetary perspective. Based on the decision the select board made on October 18th, we're budgeting for 100% of one position. And the total impact of those staffing changes is 102,000 in the police department. The, you know, at the last meeting, Chief Joy presented the updated proposal, but the numbers are the same, the request is the same, to start the position in April. The only thing that's different with the police department's request is this additional staff member is really just enough to keep them from going backwards due to their employee that's going to be deployed. And so the request is still the same to budget 75% to start in April. And finally, the library, as we discussed on October 18th, plans to expand the hours of two of the desk clerks. One of the hour expansion makes the benefit, makes the position benefits eligible. And then, and those changes, the, the additional staffing represents 13,000 in that department. And so hoping to get some direction from the select board on to continue including or excluding any of those staffing changes in the budget.
Select person there?
I'm in the same boat. I think too premature. Do I have all, all departments and stuff?
Well, we already voted to approve the.
Fire, I'm a fire. You know, another thing that we're looking for, everything comes in. I know what's needed, everything's there and stuff, now do we appeal how we're going to do it? I think, at least I do, to have I.
Select person, Mantrick?
It, it seems to me that we've already made some decisions on the police and fire.
Yep.
But library is the only one that passed out, and I would agree with Dan that maybe we want to hold that until we get a better picture of the whole budget.
Dan, Connor, you had something to add?
Yeah, I guess the point I wanted to make is, you know, department heads and staff compile the entire budget binder ahead of time with the proposals to, to try to give the board and the Budget Committee and the community that overall perspective upfront. And so Chair Knapp and I were talking a little bit before the meeting. Any changes that we've made so far have taken money out of that budget. And so it's, it's atypical, in my experience in the Barrington municipal budget process, that items get added in consistently throughout the budget process. It's more typical that items get taken out through review and negotiation and consideration for the budget. And so I think the value, from my perspective, or at least the, the value that department heads and, and department heads and I try to add to the process is having that complete line item by line item budget request at the beginning so that the Budget Committee and you folks can look and see, even though Highway Department hasn't presented their budget yet, you can see all of the numbers, you can see the details, you can see the budget narrative, et cetera. And so, I mean, I, I, it's the select board's budget. So by all means, you can make a decision all the way up until the second budget hearing in January to changes in the budget request you're making. And so I'm not, I guess I, to reiterate the point Steve Conder's made, not asking necessarily for any final decision, but I think it's important if the select board has a leaning one way or another, I think it's important, important to keep the overall budget up to date with the feelings and opinions of the select board. So as it relates to the fire and EMS, it seems pretty clear that the leaning of the select board is to keep that funding in. Similarly with police, although a formal decision hasn't been made, it seems reasonable that there's broad support to, to keep that money in through the budget process. With the library, if the, after the library presentation, it seemed that the select board wasn't supporting that. And I could be mistaken in that assumption. The Budget Committee voted at their last meeting to not recommend the inclusion of the additional wages for the staffing increase in the library. So, you know, you know, the number is 13,000. We can leave it in or take it out. But I think if the select board leaning a certain way through the process to, to try to keep the budget up to date, the overall budget request up to date, I think it'd be important to have it reflect the, what the select board's thinking, knowing that you can change your mind all the way up until the 11th hour.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to remind everyone sitting here that we have the fire EMS and the police. And there has been times during the year that our chiefs and assistant chiefs turn around and work some of the hours necessary in order to provide the town with the protection necessary, but at least be, you know, have enough on hand to handle what we have. It has shown that, that these individuals are department heads and assistant department heads. And I think they need to have the manpower in order to make it work. As brought to our attention before, we've had individuals that are, have volunteered for the military and they're, they're going to go away either for the training or for their call-up. And then we have individuals that have vacation. We have individuals that have.
George, sorry to interrupt. Where, where are we going with this?
What we're going with this is that I, I would like to see the board support that $169,000 for the fire and the EMS to have the other individuals to the request. I think it's public interest to do that.
Select person there?
I'm not, I go, I go there, but right now, I, too premature tonight. Stand the command and stuff. I think we have a law on the plate. And George, do you want a city or do you want a town? That's true. That's what we're leaning more to, a city.
We don't have enough, we don't have enough population yet to become a city, according to the IRSAs. So I am saying that.
Well.
I, I, I want to feel safe when I walk out the door. I want.
George, that's not an accurate statement. It's not an accurate statement. So.
Um, but basically, all I'm saying, we did, we had to do our.
You don't have to have a certain population.
All I'm saying is, we gotta put the best things forward to the voters. It's up to the voters, not me. I just didn't like, didn't see, they tried to make the decision.
Right.
And the voters are going to vote on.
So I, I've remained largely quiet and let everyone provide their two cents. My general sense is we're adding 102,000 for fire and EMS with 88,000 of that expected to be relatively deferred. We're putting it in the budget, but it's not going to be expended mostly based on the conversation with the chief because he is preparing for a deployment for a person who will be deployed. So it'll be there, but the expectation is it probably will not be spent. The police line, we're adding the additional funds, but again, has a similar situation where they will have a deployment and that will just keep them at even par where they're going. The library, the board discussed, and there was not a lot of support for the idea of expanding staff and staff hours. And that was echoed by the Advisory Budget Committee. So I, I do think it's important to make sure that we might, we may not vote on it, but we continue to make sure our support is provided so that there is clear direction as, as to where we move.
Thank you, Jim.
Steve?
I can make one additional enhancement to that because it is correct that that, with those deployments, the funding, I mean, the expenditure would not occur during this 22 budget year. And the other decision that you'd have to make, or the point at which you would have to change, is if they don't get deployed. That will be known before we finish this budget cycle. So we can revisit that decision if something changes.
Agreed. Is there anything else that anyone wants, feels the need to comment on? Select person there?
I'm not being negative. I have to have everything in front of me. That's why I'm, I want to pause a year to get. Each of them I agree with.
I, I don't view any of this as negative. We are, we are tasked with sitting here and making hard decisions because we're expending the resources of the residents of this town. And as much as I would love to give every department head everything they want to go out and make their employees have the best lifestyle humanly possible, we as a board have to make decisions that don't allow that to happen for everyone. And it, it, the challenge that we're faced with is the fact that because we have steps and colas and all these processes, we will effectively continue to increase the tax rate of our town forever until it will hit a point where people cry uncle. So you have to be mindful of that through this process. And we have to be thoughtful in the decisions we make, yet do what we can to provide the best service we can for our town. But it doesn't mean that everybody gets everything they want. Thank you.
Do you want me to update the budget information to exclude the library numbers at this point? Or do you want me to leave it as it is, as presented?
How does the board feel about it? Select person, Mantrick?
Oh, again, I'm not sure. Again, I thought we voted on fire EMS already. I thought we voted on the police, I think, and mistaken. But I think this is more an advisory.
Again.
Voting on this.
We voted on number one under fire and EMS, and we voted on number one for the police. We expressed that we were not overly in support of the addition of expanding hours for the library in the current budget cycle. Every year, they, they either hit us for another person or four hours. And that was one of the general comments that was made during the presentation. And the Advisory Budget Committee has also recommended against it. The only item we hadn't talked about was the proposed adding of 12 hours for the per diem staffing to accomplish shift coverage and staffing goals, which was a $14,000 hit there. So if there was one area where I was going to, where I would consider holding that, that may be the placeholder where I would look at that currently. I mean, so between that and the library, $27,000 is not going to make or break our budget in the town, is my general thought. And that's just my take of looking at the budget, saying, okay, where am I gonna? Gonna look at this? But overall, as I've expressed, I'm in support of adding the firefighter's position, the police position that we discussed and have already voted on to approve. Does anyone disagree with anything I've stated so far? That is either part of the select board or the Advisory Budget Committee? Because I'm sure there are some department heads that probably don't like what I'm saying. Are you good, Steve?
I am.
All right. Is everyone good with this?
Clear.
So I don't believe we need a vote. Our general consensus is that we have. Our general consensus is that we have already made votes on fire, EMS and police, and our support remains for those positions. The library, we continue to, is a board question whether we would support that or not. I'll leave the numbers alone till the decisions. No, I would just like to make sure Melissa is well aware of that, because I do not want her to feel surprised. Understood something changed. I don't, I don't like being surprised, and I don't think any department head should ever feel surprised. I agree. Utility, um, utility terrain vehicle update. So we have updated. So Chief Walkers here, the information's felt penatory in, in my report. Essentially, they couldn't source a twenty-twenty-one, which is what the bid was for, for the ultra terrain vehicle. I could spend fifteen minutes talking about all the details of why that's a problem, but anybody that's paid attention to supply chain shortages or impacts of COVID can probably understand. Venture Power Sports spent a lot of time working with Chief Walker to figure out how to resolve the issue. The, they are able to source a twenty-twenty-two model, which meets or exceeds the specifications as agreed to. The cost in federal tariffs and other cost escalations is nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents above what was approved by the board at the August twenty-two meeting. That's incredibly unfortunate. I think we can all agree that in a, a perfect world, we wouldn't have to be reviewing a decision in consideration for this. The tough part is, the alternative is worse. The, the alternative to try to secure even a twenty-twenty-two would be longer and more money if we started from scratch. And so my recommendation and the recommendation of the fire chief is to use nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents from available surplus in the twenty-twenty-one fire department budget to bridge the gap and bring a conclusion to the purchase that the voters authorized in twenty-twenty-one. Chief Walkers here, happy to add anything or answer any question. Are there any questions from the select board or comments from the select board? Select person Mantrick?
Yeah, will this delay our, the, the chief walker, will this delay, let's push this ultra terrain vehicle out into the future?
So if you folks approve the money tonight, the unit would probably be delivered in sometime in January. In the queue right now, they have that one unit that they would like us to have. He has what he believes is one more, and then for the two months after that, there is zero allotment for them. So he, he believes that they're gonna end up with two units sometime in early January, sometime in January for the one of ours, the other one in February, and then may not see another until April or May, just the way the allotment's working.
Select person Eric, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, well, it's just crazy right now. I've been personally doing stuff. Can't pay for, friends have dealt with me and stuff, they just can't do it and stuff. And some, some people agree who you are. I don't know, it's hard to say, the things that happen and stuff, cheap money, but no, you shop around, probably finds out. But it takes time and money and stuff, so.
I'll say me too. So my general thought on it is, is, you know, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars is not the end of the world. My, my only kind of gripe about it is we had people who bid it, and unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond their control, the high, the winning bidder in this case couldn't deliver on the bid without having to go up to the next model. In that case, we get hit with the added cost of tariffs and additional fees.
But what it's worth, that vendor has literally worked with the supplier for the last four months, trying desperately to acquire a unit for us, to the point of even saying, hey, look, we were the, we were the bidder, we were the selected bidder for this process, and assuming that we could produce this unit. And, you know, bear, the, the higher ups than them, I don't know, and said, yeah, we don't have anything to give you.
I recognize that. The tough part is, is there are three other people who also made bids with the expectation that they would supply a vehicle.
Yep.
And.
And, and one vendor that was, that supplied the same unit that we awarded the bid to indicated to me he was gonna bid and didn't, and the reason he didn't bid is because he didn't have a.
Couldn't get a unit.
Why us.
Yep. Which is also the, the subsequent part of what I was going to say before you hopped on here, is I also understand that.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is, in speaking with former company.
Rick?
I'm sorry.
Please.
Sorry.
The, the piece that I was finishing up with on this is that I recognize the challenges of the supply chain and the fact that they're committing a unit that has less than a ten percent, it's basically a five percent markup with the tariffs and fees, is really not unreasonable or even unheard of in this. And as much as I hate eating it, I'm willing to accept it and move on because any more time and effort spent on it is just wasting resources.
Chair looking for a motion?
I would be.
I'd like to make a motion, make a motion for authorized utilization of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents from the availability set plus of the twenty-twenty-one fire department budget to increase the bed award to twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents to Ventura Power Sports for a twenty-twenty-two UTV instead of playing twenty-twenty-one UTV.
Roll call vote. There are. Give me a second. Oh, was it, sorry, I thought I had a second on it already. Is there a second?
I'll second until we can vote.
Roll call vote. There are.
Mantrick, no.
Early eye.
So here lies the, the fun one, because I voted no for this right from the get-go. I'm gonna vote no and open it back up for further discussion at this point. Because it was, it was awarded by the voters, but it's administered by the select. And right now, it's failed to vote for the expanded funds, so. Select person air?
I, I'm putting my mouth up. The, the unit that K and M that they won, K and M, I'm not possibly the best judges of the town. That one, we'd set up and stuff, and it was really hard to get a stretcher. Those other units are made by different vendors and different setups, Jit and Chazzy. K and M is a Cadillac, I won't describe that, but it's more of a recreational fund. I don't know if they want to change the tune or go back to the other bidders, if it's available, but it's all time and money. That's why, this day and age, I don't know, doing what I've been doing personally today, I saved ten grand. I pissed some people off, but it's, it's, right now, it's just crazy out there. Certain vendors are greedy, and the other ones aren't.
If I could, Mr. Chair, uh, there's a question. A mental question. You can answer it how you'd like. I guess what I'm looking for is, I'm, I'm not trying to carry on with a sales pitch, so. No, well, I think there's a piece of information that's valuable, I'd like the board to consider it. Okay. The Fire Association originally offered fifty percent of the cost, and they, their total, what they've offered up to this point is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, ninety-four cents, which reflects more than fifty percent of the, the total cost higher than anticipated. I think that's important to keep in mind when the select board considers spending a little bit more money. Yep. Thank you. Select person Mantrick?
I, I appreciate that too, but this thing keeps getting escalated. We've had the, what, three thousand dollar jump from what we originally voted on? Now we're asking for another thousand dollars added on to that. Just a little, little concern. Was terribly in favor of, again, with, met that prejudice, but worried about the escort.
Is there any other discussion from the board before I turn it back over to the chief for?
The essence. Cancel them.
Well, therein lies the, the current state here.
So we didn't, we did not purchase a Cadillac of K and M's. We were quoted two different K and M's. One was around twenty-six thousand dollars, which is a little bit of higher, if you wanna call it a Cadillac. And the model that we had bid is a base model. This is a base model. The unique part of this whole process is that because of the fact that the Fire Association offered up the amount of money for the town to acquire this unit for over half the cost of it. Again, I'll stand here and say that, like I did a few months ago, that the town's getting a unit for fifty cents on the dollar, or, or actually less, probably forty-five cents on the dollar. The original increase, I'll just remind this question, that when we went out last fall at this time and got prices for units, it went to the voters in March, and then we put the bid process out in June for bids to come back in July. The, the state of the economy, which anybody that is purchasing anything, whether they're raw materials and, and industry, which you folks work, everything has gone up, and the cost of that unit went up just because of the, the economy of the world, and it forced us to come back. Our association went back and says, hey, we'll put more money in here. The important thing to understand here is, is that if you folks lead this vote the way it is, and it fails, then in effect, you're taking, we're taking the tool away from the fire department that I think is very valuable for the fire department, and I just wanna quantify the fact, I've heard the rumors floating around that it's just a toy for the fire department. Well, you know, I, I don't operate on the idea that we gotta have toys. I truly believe we did this unit because we've shown in numerous occasions when people get half a mile out in the woods, need to be carried out, it's very labor intensive. This unit will have a skid unit on the back that does in fact hold a full stretcher so that we can take the person out. We, we, we've specked out a skid unit for medical purposes, we've specked out a skid unit for fire purposes. And again, not to be lost in this whole thing, was this is gonna be a joint unit shared with the police department, so they can use it for enforcement activities on the, on the trails out there, because people call up and complain that there's stuff going on out there and they have no ability to get out and deal with it. But the bigger thing is, is that it would be unfortunate if this vote stands the way it is tonight, and this, and, and you folks, it doesn't go anywhere, because it won't be any cheaper in March. So if we come forward with a warrant article to ask the voters to support putting more money in so we can come back out the bid, ultimately, it's still gonna end up costing the taxpayers more money, because I can assure you in conversations with the vendors that I have, that I, that I've been working with to try to secure this unit, there's a significant price increase. They, they, they've sharpened their pencil as much as they possibly can, because they do want us to, they feel a certain obligation to make sure we got the unit. But when you get a, when you get some of these cost increases that they don't have any control over, and I'll stand here all day long, you, you can't give, you can't give anything away, you keep giving stuff away, and at some point, you can't keep the lights on. So, you know, if you folks wanna go back out to bid and, and put it back out to the voters, that certainly is a choice, but I would strongly suggest that you put yourselves in the position to add money to that process, because to go out with the same amount of money you got, it, it would be futile.
Select person air?
Is there any way to talk to vendors that already bid it once? If they're, the, the things that have changed, whether they might have it and stuff, naturally you'll make a decision?
Well, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair to the people that have already bid it, and I don't think it's, you know, I think that if you're gonna go back out that way, that you gotta go up to And I don't, and I'll say this, I don't think the, you know, I think the K and M unit.
Did I say Cadillac?
Yep.
It's not, it's, K and M has a good name, compared to a different, different neighborhood. So I didn't really mean Cadillac, but it's a referred thing, but you pay for a better, more called for that certain, yeah, and a different name. So I would try to discredit K and M. They do a carrier pricing.
Select person Bailey?
May I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the past motion that failed.
Make a motion, but I, I guess the question I would ask is, is there anything that has changed anybody's position or mind at this point?
I don't think so.
My, my general sense is, it's great that we're getting it for forty-five cents on the dollar at this point. Problem is, is we become responsible for it in perpetuity, because we never get rid of anything, we just add more stuff to the collection, which means we have to pay for more stuff twenty years from now, or ten years from now, depending on when we have to replace it. And it just keeps compounding, and it's a cost that compounds to the residents of the town.
Well, and, you know, and in fairness, and my rebuttal for that is, is, and I'll, and I'll say this, you know, we, twenty years ago, this town had twenty-five hundred people in it. Now we have ten thousand people in it, and the people expect certain services, whether that's police or fire, ambulance, recreation or whatever. And I stand by, when I present my budget to you, that my job is to tell you what I need to run my department, and the five of you's job is to decide whether any of us can afford this. And, you know, when we, when, you know, I think to some degree, you guys are sensitive to the fact that we need to increase the services and there's a cost to these services. But, you know, when I sit out there and, and we talk about whether we should add one or two firefighters, that we should add a police officer, we should add any of this stuff, you know, we just, we just approved eighty-five or a hundred new units in this town, that pick a dumb number, are gonna add at least two people to every one of them, perhaps three. And, and that means increased need for services. And we take all this land and we put it into conservation use, and we take and we build trails and we encourage people to go out and walk on these things. And then when somebody gets hurt and we have to go a mile into the woods to get these people, I don't have the staff to do that. I can't, two or three people can't, which is to carry somebody out. So I asked for this unit as a tool to provide the services that are expected on my department. And so, you know, it be, it becomes frustrating when we sit here and say, well, it's, you know, we add all this conservation land and it's free, or we add this or that, and it's free, and well, it isn't free, because at the end result, it either takes more police officers to, to, to protect the people that are using that space, or it takes additional fire protection or emergency services protection. And, and it hasn't changed. During the day, I have two firefighters now, I've got one out on disability, so we ran short staff today because I didn't have any, there was two of us. I'm not making excuses, I turned my time. I turned my time sheets in at four o'clock today because we were so darn busy that I couldn't get them done. And if somebody would have got hurt on one of them trails, I stand a better chance of going out there with a four wheeler with two or three people and rescuing them than if I had to walk out there. Because now, now it requires manpower and I have to bring two or three other communities or four other communities in to help me make their same rescue. Now, I'm not saying that you're giving that four wheeler and I'm not going to need them for a town. But we're all fighting the same fight. There's no extra help anywhere around. It doesn't matter where it's going, we're just, we are strapped. We're, we're all running bare bones and we may, may not get the people. And it's important for you folks to understand that that's what that four wheeler is a tool. It's not a damn toy. I've heard comments said to me that, that members of the people sitting up at that table have said, well, it's just another toy for those guys. It's not a damn toy.
I don't know who's saying that.
Well.
No, it wouldn't be me. I just disagree with the idea of having, especially because I have a place in the mountains and they don't have them up there. Everything is done as manual rescue, so.
And they have far more people also, they have people trained to do that and then people are paid well to do that.
A lot of them are volunteers. It's a, that's a different issue. The, the only way, and I guess it's a suggestion to you folks, because I, I have been a no vote on this since the very beginning. You did vote yes once? Are you sure? I, I just checked the date because, because Rick and I exchanged emails. I was like, look, he voted yes. It was August ninth. You voted to a yes to award the bid.
It had to be a fluke.
Yeah.
There's an accident.
Conversation is that the additional thousand, are, are you folks ame, please hold. Are the, are you folks amenable to the idea that if the additional thousand is funded by Conservation Commission? You would support it? Select person Manfred.
I don't recall, but maybe, maybe you had the number on her. What was, what was the warrant? Art sort of proved this, what it?
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand? What was that, sorry?
Thirty-two thousand and right now I just did the math and the, oh, let me add one number back in. I can tell you, um, what the total cost is right now. Thirty-four, thirty-five, um. Seven eighty-two, twenty-two. So thirty-seven eighty-two, twenty-two higher than initially approved.
Actually four thousand dollars.
And where we started?
Of like thirty-four.
Right. And the, the request is an, another thousand than what they were actually going to pay for. The rest came from. Right, the fireman, the Barrington Fire Association's picking up a majority of the twenty, twenty-seven hundred eighty-two dollars of that, or twenty-seven hundred and? Twenty-nine, twenty-eight hundred, yeah, roughly twenty-eight hundred because that leaves the eight eighty-two. Exactly. Select person there.
I can present to the conservation, conservation controls are spending their money and their funds. And that's being done by vote and that's being a minute dispersal. So it takes procedure.
Chief Joy.
So I think from a public safety standpoint, I, I agree with Rick in all facets. I'd also like to say that from a public safety standpoint, we don't just collect stuff. We started out with nine cruisers, we're down to eight. We got rid of that Humvee because it didn't get used. We had a motorcycle that we got rid of because we didn't need it anymore. That doesn't just apply to us, that applies to public safety in general. My other concern is I was there for a number of rescues last year. I'm tired of walking baskets out. We put an individual in a trailer on a four wheeler that is privately owned. That's one unacceptable and two opens the owner of that four wheeler up to a huge liability. If we want to talk about the White Mountains, I'm a son of the White Mountains. You do have volunteer squads up there, highly trained, highly organized volunteer squads. The Bellinat Mountains have a very similar organization. I'm not aware of one for the Barrington area. If anybody can educate me, I'd be happy to see that, but we don't have one. So we're not getting those people on call to go out there, getting me, deputy chief, chief, whoever's on duty, which actually drains the town of services. When we go to do a rescue, every cop in town is out there, every fire department member in town is out there. What happens when something happens on Barry River Road when we're committed to self? We have that piece of equipment that allows us that, get that person out of there efficiently and quickly. And I'll just leave it at that.
Any, hold on, any further discussion here?
One more question for, for everyone concerned. Doesn't it make some sense that we have some sort of a regional effort to get this ultra terrain vehicle that we could have Draftord Lee, Nottingham, Northwood?
Better. We're a member of that currently.
Right, couldn't we get that organization or that grouping to all get part of this?
Select person there.
I really need to go to the bathroom, but I will present it to the conservation.
Well, go ahead and go to the bathroom if you'd like and we will continue, just continue our general discussion here.
Did you reject, you rejected my motion, right?
I told you to, I asked you to please hold it.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to make sure of.
While we're having further discussion.
Okay, I understand, no, I'm, I made my motion, I thought so.
Well, you, you didn't make your motion because you wanted to make a motion and I asked you to hold the thought. So there hasn't been a second motion on. So, I, I mean, I don't know if, if there is, Dan Sees, sounds like he's willing to present it to Conservation. See if there is support there. Whi- which is kind of where this all started in the beginning from my standpoint was that if we have Conservation, let them, a- and it creates a resource constraint for our departments, they should bear some of that cost.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Conservation Commission, I had, I sent an email to the chairman of the Conservation Commission. And while they certainly supported the need for the unit, um, they did not feel they were in a position to add any funds to this. Um, and, you know, good, bad or indifferent and, you know, I, I know what I need. And, you know, and at the end of the day, if you folks both know, it is what it is. You guys got to make a decision tonight. Um, I've, I've spoke to all the vendors. They're not, they won't hold that unit that they're holding for us. Um, they, they know down well and I'm, I'm not using this as a sales pitch. They know and I know down well, there's nothing on the floor down there. If they don't sell that for the town of Barrington, they're going to sell, sell it to somebody else for more money. So either the four year, got to make a decision tonight, whether it's in a decision that I like or not, because it's not fair to, to keep those. I've spoke to all of them and said, one way or the other, you get a call Tuesday morning saying it's all done and over and we're not going to do it or, but, um, I don't know what else to tell you guys. You know, I'm sixty-two years old. I shouldn't be out chasing, you know, carrying somebody out of the woods for three quarters of a mile. And I'm probably one of the younger ones other than my, whoever's on staff that day that's going to come up and do it. You know, you, you can either, and I'm not saying this is a threat, but when you take a sixty-two year old guy and a sixty-five year old guy and a sixty-eight year old guy and you send them in to start hauling people out of the woods by hand, maybe you're going to have a pretty significant win, it's called case.
Or maybe we're going to fix our fire roads so we can get trucks into these spaces like we should have.
Well, I don't know that that's the fire department's issue.
But it's part of the Conservation Commission's issue.
But this isn't, this isn't, this isn't between you guys and the Conservation Commission. This is the fire chief standing here and telling you, we need this piece of equipment to, to provide the services that we need to do. Whatever issue you guys got with the Conservation Commission is between you and them.
Thank you for your feedback, Rick. All right, Mr. Bailey.
After, after all the discussion we've had, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration.
There a second to the motion? Hearing none? Nope, motion doesn't carry.
Thank you for your retaining it, Chairman.
All right, new business, twenty-twenty-two police cruiser. Chief Joy, would you like to come up and?
Don't unmute it. Shuttle?
Yeah, the camera hasn't been working, but your microphone's on the table there.
I'm okay with no camera, that doesn't hurt my feelings at all. I have presented everything that I have to say. You gentlemen have had that for a week now. Long story short, I told you during my budget presentation that cruisers were going to be a problem. Uh, done some research. I was able to source one from Govern Municipal HQ, which is a new one to me. Uh, I did some on the ground talking with different chiefs and supervisors and found it there. They were able to source it cheaper than Irwin Automotive, who is where we normally go for state bid. And I included both of those quotes with my presentation so you can see the actual difference. Back in April, when we dealt with the other cruiser, I asked that the ten thousand dollars we made available towards the end of the budget cycle, we're now at the end of the budget cycle and I'm asking for that ten thousand dollars to be released so I can preorder my cruiser.
Select person there.
So, but there's eleven-five, I have to come up with it, eleven-five was from sales.
Correct.
That's another ten grand, so you can buy this or twenty-one, twenty-one-five, you can get the cruiser for?
No, the eleven-five has nothing to do with anything except that's what we brought in before from the sale of the cruisers. But I'm just asking for the ten thousand that you all approved back in April to be released so that I can order my cruiser.
The balance paid for the twenty-twenty.
From the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Thirty-eight grand.
Uh, you have it in front of you and I have it back there if you'd like.
Oh, well, you budgeted thirty-eight grand, I think.
I budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's correct.
Then plus the ten, forty-eight.
Correct, yes. So I'm going to need to buy and outfit the cruiser and the prices of outfitting has gone up significantly as well.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to go back and grab the quotes? I have them.
No, 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 I, I just left, I brought my, my basic packet, but not the.
Attached.
Out all the attachment stuff. Um, and the interceptors that in the, this is the sedan, not the?
No, 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 they're calling the SUV the interceptor now.
Okay.
The Taurus's are no longer, they're no longer, they're gone.
Right, well, my only, I, I know they did make an all wheel drive at one point as well in the Taurus, that was why.
Yes, yeah, the Taurus's cruisers are no longer being produced.
But my only, that was my only concern is that I know everyone tends to seem to lean to the SUVs so that the sedans were not getting the mileage.
Yeah, so we have gone now to a cruiser assignment situation so that that's gone. Uh, all the mileage is being balanced appropriately amongst the cruisers. Uh, right now, for instance, I have one, which is the Explorer off of, of twenty-five percent of the time balancing it out with the Chargers. Um, so that, yeah, the Chargers, when they were coming in, were kind of the favorite thing. So they were getting my, they weren't getting a break. They were literally on the road twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that's shifted. The new explorers, the cockpits of the twenty-twenty-one are comfortable for the guys again. So the bigger guys can get in them without any problems. Um, the Chargers are still being utilized, it's just now it's a more balance.
Select person there.
But it's pre-order and then. So that's only forty-eight grand, so we do have any problem, it should cover.
Yeah, I would anticipate no problems dealing with it, with what I have budgeted and the ten thousand dollars that you gentlemen voted on back in April to release.
Right, so the ten thousand dollars released plus the, um, insurance money off of the one vehicle.
That is all, that is expended. I believe that account is zeroed at this point in time.
Um, so there'll be twenty, roughly twenty-three thousand change.
Right, wi- with the plan to leave a balance in place so I can do this again next year because I don't see the situation getting any better inside of a year. So I want to leave myself money in that account to preorder this time next year as well.
Based on what I'm seeing, we're two years out before you see relief in the auto market.
I would tend to agree.
And, and at that point, then you might get a spectacular deal.
At that point, I might be here.
You may.
I, someone asked me that we got a Chevy or, or the, um, dog or something like that.
No, sir, nope, it is. It's a Ford Explorer, it's a twenty-twenty-one, it's one of the ones that was totaled and replaced.
Right.
Yep, it's a Ford.
I, so it's going to say we are full-size Chevy.
We don't, we don't have a single Chevy in the.
I know, I don't think so.
No, sir.
Thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
Any other comments from the board or concerns? All right, looking for a motion.
I move that we authorize me twenty-four intercept to drive from the Govern uh, Municipal Headquarters using ten thousand dollars from the twenty-twenty-one budget incident fund as down payment with the balance to be paid from the twenty-twenty-two operating budget for police vehicles.
Full call vote.
Here I, and Rick I.
Hello.
Napa.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Public Safety Building Cellular Connectivity Improvements. You've got the information in there. This is something that we've been talking about, um, really since March. The Technology Committee spent a long time on, um, this process with the cellular bidirectional antenna solution um, was brought forward by the, our radio communications consultant. Um, let us know that this is the kind of professional solution to a cellular connectivity problem. Um, fortunately, this would be eligible use of the ARPA funds, um, under the Public Safety, um, improvements. And so the, um, the request, uh, is to proceed. Uh, we still have some details to work out, um, with the, um, Comtronics Bearcom, excuse me, uh, that the communication consultant wants to meet with, um, and talk a little bit about the specific scope. Um, it's a very long, uh, proposal, so I didn't print it for you all, but it's available online, link to my report. Uh, so just looking for the authorization to proceed, uh, and start working on the solution for the cellular connectivity, uh, which is basically non-existent at the Public Safety Building across all carriers. I think this is an important item to address, um, especially with all the problems and the fact that that's like a black hole when it comes to cellular connectivity. For both of public safety and for police and fire. Um, I'll make the motion to approve expending up to forty thousand dollars from ARPA funds for public safety cellular connectivity improvements using Comtronics and Bearcom.
Second.
Full call though.
And Rick I.
Hello.
Napa. Awesome, thank you, really appreciate that support. Select person there.
More discussion, thoughts? With some, the business is putting towers up and then other towers coming up too. Are we, I mean, time of all that?
The only tower that I'm aware of is the one that was conditionally approved on, um, Stevie Pam Lenzey's property, um, that has been delayed due to a, the last planning board meeting, they asked for another extension and it was because of a merger with the carriers that was, they were kind of reprioritizing what towers. That's the only specific one that I'm aware of. Um, and it's certainly possible that they put up a tower on that property across from Commerce Way and that serves the hole in the public safety area. And so in five years, this equipment could be redundant. Uh, but I think the, um, I appreciate the select board's support because it is an issue that we need to address now.
Thank you.
Yep. Would the board mind if I actually have a question for the chief? As I was sitting here processing, um, part of our meeting. And it, it's a kind of off the cuff idea that may actually help, um, Rick and your concern, is this something like the Police Association with the UTV would donate the, potentially donate the extra?
I would certainly take that to the union. It. I don't know who nine four eight is, that may be the, Martin, oh, that's my, okay, yes, I will absolutely take that to the, happy to.
I mean, that's one way where I think it's a, it creates a little bit of shared responsibility in it. I, I'd probably be a bit more amenable to it, even though I haven't been amenable to apparently any of it, but one vote. You, you voted yes. Can, can I make a suggestion, um, regardless of Conservation Commission or Police Union? If you, if you want to make a vote that as long as the money didn't. if you, if you want to make a vote that as long as the money didn't come from the operating budget, then there'd be flexibility. Like if the part that matters to you is that there's no operating budget expenditure, that's the part that matters to you.
Well, you can make adding, well, I, my concern is that we've kept adding to it and increasing the amount.
But if your comfort level gets to where it needs to be, if somebody else pays for it, regardless of who it is.
I still don't like the idea of doing it. I just, I also can have appreciation for the fact that like, you know, as a 43-year-old guy, I don't want to be in the woods humping somebody out. So I'm sure as a 62-year-old guy, I can, I can understand that.
As an individual who runs mountains for fun, I don't want to be humping.
Same, same thing.
Okay.
Select person there.
I like to make a motion reconsider the failed motion and table of the next meeting, as long as the funds does not come out of the general fund from outside parties. I don't identify, I'll do, you do your work, I'll do my work.
Or incident fund. Okay with the incident fund?
No, I said or incident fund.
Just the operating budget.
Operating budget, yeah.
The only part I question about your motion is table it to the next meeting. I think if, if the board's comfortable with if we get the money elsewhere with proceeding, I'd hope that we could proceed before the next meeting.
All right, but I'm saying this is both of you have your homework. Well, time to does matter. You're gonna do your job or do my job?
All right. Find these couple of days.
General feedback. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Bailey. Roll call vote.
Here I. Okay, Mantrick, I.
So I can still vote no.
Yes, you can.
No, but I, but I do support it. I'll vote, I'll vote I on this.
Put it on the calendar.
Okay. I don't like it, but.
Nine nine thirty six dollars.
A thousand.
Thousand even.
All right.
Well, I mean, just
Make, make it a G.
Are you gonna donate it?
No, you are.
It was nine sixty five twenty eight was the exact number.
A thousand dollars outside.
Yeah.
Yep.
Up two.
And if another source does donate, the select board will have to hold a meeting. If it's less than 10,000, it won't have to be put notice in paper, but obviously have to have a hearing to accept that.
I don't mind doing that.
Okay. I think we're up to ten.
Oh, holding a hearing. Oh, I'm saying you really were stepping out.
I thought like, you know, you big retired guys with all your money would cash cough it right up there, but. Oh. Class six private road agreement. All right, let's talk about this.
Okay, so this is a simple one, but I don't, I hope that we won't go down a deep rabbit hole tonight. I think we all collectively agreed harmonization that we need to have happen. Or even just recommendations from agent, fire chief, police chief, and building inspector. And so the tough part is it's tough to do that when we have the queue, because as we realized with the Lindsay Point application, just really muddied the waters and made it difficult to separate bigger conversation we need to have in this. Fortunately, the timing is great right now because we don't generally have many requests for public hearings for classics and private road agreement permits because people aren't building the winter. So what we're recommending is that the select board pause the hearings for the section two building permits pursuant to this policy, with one exception, which would be one that staff has already been working with on Orchard Hill Road. We would expect to see that in the coming weeks or months, but that's really the only one that's in the pipeline. And so the request is to pause the hearing until the updated policy is approved.
Select person there.
Orchard Hill is still a massive budget this year. Fix it up within half of this year.
Well, the money's still available. The roadblock has been in the engineering, so we, we, instead of engineering the whole project, we engineered just the top in order to get the abutter to, to sign on to, to be, because he's got to give up part of his property and have retaining wall. And so we have that, and then we commissioned the engineering with CMA a month or two ago. So it's definitely not, the work is not going to happen this year. The potential application is up on the class five portion. It's a property that was recently changed hands. And they've been working with the road agent, fire chief, and the building inspector. And he's already started preparing to make some improvements even before they're required.
It gets worse up there. Technically, for me personally, I we need understanding of what this, what fire marshals calling out. I can do research and stuff. I can come up a different idea and stuff. And then two, then it goes back to that age.
Dan, respectfully, I, it's an important conversation we need to have. I completely agree. I'm just asking that we pause the hearings until then. With Orchard Hill, if we brought a, a application forward for a public hearing on Orchard Hill, my expectation is that any fire code and policy issues would be resolved before it even got here. And the fire chief and property owner are already working on that.
I'm, that's the same problem. It is not, it's not legal in the, at the beginning. It's not legal when you go in there. But we need interpretation. We gotta figure this out. It's up.
Well, I think that's the whole point of this, is trying to figure it out.
How can we, this one slide is in progress. That whole, that whole is wrong.
Well, we're not letting it slide. It's still gonna go before a hearing, but I think the point is, different than Lindsay Point, I think the app, the property owner is gonna resolve the concerns with the fire code and limitations of the code prior to bring it before the select board.
Right. I think that's the thing, though. They haven't put it before the board, so. I mean, it's tough to tough to even vote. We're gonna talk about pausing it. They haven't even put an application in to come before the board. So how would you let them pass, get a pass on it?
Well, they're not gonna get any more of a pass than Lindsay Point application did. I mean, they're still gonna have to go through the process. It, but it, so this is what it's gonna be. The select board queue process is gonna be I'll hesitantly use the word disjointed as the conversation in Lindsay Point conversation because you're, you're being asked to consider a specific application to have the bigger picture update that need to happen to the policy in the background. Personally, I don't think it's fair to this property owner who's been working with staff for literally months to understand his requirements. And like I said, he's already started the process of making some improvements to the road in preparation for the requirements that will be forthcoming. So I don't necessarily think it's fair to exclude this property from the process since it's the only one in the pipeline. But you're welcome to proceed how you wish.
Can't put the horse before the cart. We, we want the pavement.
That is, so the horse is always before the cart, Dan.
No, you can't.
Can't put the cart before the horse.
What?
You can't put the cart before the horse, I think is what you mean.
Right, but basically it's engineering stuff that's going on. It never got done over there, so not the next year. So we, how can we prove the access? If these upgrades up there, we have to go through there.
Well, his upgrades would only be on the class six portion, the, up to the, up to past the top of the hill where the old farm is, is class five.
Right. Have you been, I've been down there years ago. Am I remembering right? It isn't like twelve foot, fourteen foot.
No, it's, it's much better than that because three or four years ago. Yeah, three or four years ago, a building permit was improved and some road improvements were done and accompanied to that. Accompanied that, that approval.
Well, they didn't put a sprinkle on.
So, and that's what I mean about the fire code issue be resolved before it comes here, that, that maybe they'll have a waiver and it'll be resolved and everybody, there won't be any disagreement.
So what is the, I guess what I look at here is, we have 20 of lots that are on class six roads that could potentially be building or are, have always been treated from a tax standpoint as building lots. And now we're talking about putting a pause on this, which means they are not building lots at this time because they can't get the necessary
Permits.
Permits in front of, by coming in front of the board. So I don't feel like we're helping our, we're helping ourselves in one way, but there's no urgency in another way.
I guess my point, this is a process that I would expect to be concluded within two months by the beginning of next year. And this is, we generally don't have applications coming forward, but opposed to letting applications stack up or come before the board, I think it would be most appropriate to just communicate to residents when they come in and say, hey, I'd like to start the application process to say, hey, the select board is in the process of updating their policy. Please, they put a hold on hearings until that's resolved. We expect that by the beginning of the year. You can submit it then, because it's the winter season, it shouldn't really hold them up.
Should we request a waiver, or should we request a meeting with the fire marshal in the governor's office?
Yes.
So I think as part, whatever the select board wants to do as part of the updating your policy, you're welcome to do that. But I, I again, I don't really want to go down the rabbit hole of the updating the policy at this point, but I do think that it's prudent to, to pause the hearings so that there's some clarity. I think what you heard from Mr. Stillwag in Lindsay Point, he was incredibly frustrated based on the, the information that he was receiving that was different than the select board's policy and else, you know, and otherwise. And I think my goal is to prevent another resident from experiencing that confusion if we're reviewing applications while we're updating policy.
I would agree. I also just think we need to be mindful of the fact that if somebody's looking to start the process of building and they have, and, and finding a contractor right now, if they can get a contractor and can only get them now because they're gonna be booked up or otherwise, that's a significant impact to anybody looking to build anything at this point.
The Orchard Hill property is a perfect example. I mean, this is a process that takes months before they even submit an application. Fortunately, John, you know, he answers general questions to folks that have asked about classics and private road building applications, but he doesn't have anybody that he knows of that's actively pursuing like Orchard Hill. So I think, you know, we could certainly revisit it if, if one came forward, but I think it'd be easier in the short term, in my opinion. And, and John and Vic support this as well, to let the resident know that, hey, we're not, the select board isn't holding hearings right now as they update their policy. Select person there.
If you're gonna invite anyone, I personally and then being on conservation, I will be, I will be what, yeah, I see what they want, exactly what fire marshal wants, but contradicts the E S. They look for the sheet full of water and stuff, and that price of getting permits and stuff. It's, we need to get everyone on board. Is it the constitution outlook to minimize the impact of wetlands? And then D S, you get the permit in for that. They minimize everything. And then, then we're saying, well, the fire marshal wants this. They, they don't drive. Trust me, they don't drive.
And select person there, under little III, I would encourage any select board member to consider the adjustments they'd recommend considering the policy review process. So send me an email. Let me know that, hey, I'd like to D S requirements as well, so that we can have a comprehensive review. So definitely want to go down that roll, get into the weeds of updating the policy. Please send me your recommendations in advance so they can be researched, included in the town administrator reports. Just the the action that we're asking for is to pause the hearings for your consideration.
How does the rest of the board feel about this? Select person Bailey, then select person Mantrick.
Thank you very much. I just think that people involved in this need to get clarification from the state. I mean, this policy was written. The it was myself, Rick was there, remember whether or not it was Ted. All was from John was there representing the planning board, one thing's better on the one. And we're, we're still there. Everybody, you know, and Connor, I'm not being ingenious to say this, but the rabbit hole has got to be filled before we can do anything. That's why I'm looking to get the state requirements out of the way from the fire marshal. That's, that's something that bothers me.
I think we all agree about that. I think there's unanimous agreement.
Then we should have a check for a meeting like she recommends. Thank you.
Select person Mantrick.
It doesn't seem like it's going to be all that big a deal to pause this since there doesn't seem to be much coming on anyway. So why don't we pause having hearings for two months?
I think we can. I'm not, I'd, I'd rather just work through and solve it as opposed to well, to create a potential hardship for someone. Although, I mean, we create a conundrum for ourselves sitting here for hours on end. Select person there.
If someone comes in tomorrow, they're on a private road and they, it is 20 feet, they want to get a billboard.
Then it's not a problem. They're, they have 20 feet.
All right. Do you want to allow that?
I don't think there's many private roads that have 20 feet.
That's all.
But then, but then you're going against the policy that has 16 and two by two.
Yeah, but that's 20 feet.
Doesn't say 20 feet there.
All right, we're going down. The question is, do we want to pause this or do we not want to pause it?
I want to, I think we should pause. Two months. Just Mantrick.
Select person there.
The idea, we need to get over there and tell us what was looking. Once he tells what was just looking at, then we contact other agents.
All right, so I hate the idea of pausing it, but I'll go along with it. My request out of it would be that we get a, we compile a list of problems, concerns, conflicting items between agencies and request a meeting between whoever we need to in the governor's office and see if we can get this sorted out because this will hopefully help put it to bed, not only for Barrington, but for a whole lot of other communities, 254 other communities in the state of New Hampshire.
Absolutely.
Follow it correctly.
Please, anybody that has adjustments that they'd like to see, issues with the policy, please send me an email. Happy to include that in the review, thorough review.
And you can be the, the hero of the New Hampshire Municipal Association by compiling, getting this compiled, put out to all the different.
Yes, I think, to be perfectly honest, I think a lot of communities solve the problem by just not issuing any permits on classics and private roads. I know that. The New Hampshire Municipal Association Legal Counsel advises communities against issuing any permits on classics and private roads. And I, I don't think that's right for Barrington. I don't think that's what's right for Barrington. I think there's a lot of property on classics and private road that is, is properly developable. But that's the solution of majority of the state.
Also, we could do a lot of racket issue too. If that affects the Z V when it
Right, it, this is related purely to classics and private roads.
Exactly what I'm doing. Is that's what they beat, they beat itself when they come before us.
Write it up and submit it, please, to Connor. Select person Air, do you have something more to add to writing this up and submitting it?
Yeah. Well, it triggers that all on private road. You have to get a driver permit in the town on a private road. And, and our classics road. And that's a fee that's charged. That kind of triggers and then some, if we, other towns didn't do that, how do they charge a fee? Where we did, we're, we're stuck in the middle of it.
All right. So please write that up and submit it. Okay, thank you. Moving on, so we need a a vote to pause public hearings, or I'm looking for a motion to pause the public hearings for a, for classics and private roads for two months.
I move the review and update select board class six private road policy and temporarily halt the select board hearings process.
Until January first.
For two months.
Yeah, so till January 1, 2022.
Right.
Thank you. Second that motion. Roll call vote.
Here I. Mantrick, I.
Napa.
Thank you.
Love the pain of all.
Your punishment.
Pretty much. Select boards reports.
There. And that, let us know what's right change. Read on that. And then I went to the conservation, look at it. FYI, it looked like conservation. Southeast Land Trust came in for, do a boardwalk for excited permit, do a D S and stuff. So what's gonna happen is I never been there personally and stuff. I never been there personally and stuff, but I knew there's no swimming there, but they're going to allow, they have a new parkland before the gate. So you're going to walk in on the left and go a half mile down to the water. Outside of the roadway.
Where?
Someone else's barn. And then Southeast Land Trust doesn't allow swimming. But on the right side of the fishing game. That's only allowed for boating and fishing, no swimming. So someone, someone's out, so what was that? So on the right side, you can't go swimming, on the left side you can. And you can't park on the right side if you're going swimming, but the left side you can. So it should be interesting.
What does the easement say that we gave to South? What is it, what, what does it say they have to do about that?
There's nothing to do with South. South owns the land, they're allowing swimming. But the fishing game has a federal grant, the money was donated for fishing and boating, not swimming. So. They're saying they have to post a whole thing, no swimming, or if someone drops a helicopter in there, he goes swimming.
But, but they approved the easement. And so what, that South had, was it saying that the easement, that, that how that's going to be covered? Through the other people because South owns the majority of it.
You need a prosecutor on the right, but on the left side you're not going to prosecute.
Select person Bailey, I think what you're referring to is a recreation plan that South prepared for Stonehouse Forest as part of the town. Holds part of the conservation easement. We don't hold the primary, I think we hold like the executory interest. I think we're an executive interest holder. So the, that recreation plan is, is just that, it's a plan. I mean, their goal is to improve and open up recreation. This has been a years-long issue with fishing game and South and local authorities. And this is the solution that they proposed, building the parking lot, creating a path that takes people away from the state of New Hampshire fishing game boat launch. Gives them an opportunity to swim, but they have to hike in, which they hope will address the parking and trash issues down at the fishing game portion. Which is supposed to be a rooftop car boat launch for fishing.
If you recall, one of the complaints I brought for the board. Years ago was the fact that South has not lived up to their part of the bargain with the conservation easement, which includes putting the trails for people to go through the property. So I, I am quite concerned that the easement be checked. Ensure that everyone is getting, uh, doing failures and what's in the easement.
I'm going to clarify that, I gained knowledge during that meeting. They shut down the trail around the barn and stuff. And now you, this half-mile trailer you're in, you come back to that parkland and then the trails there branch off from there, George. They, they have a, we, we consider it. So the plan is in place and trails are in place. They, they even took trails out. And added new ones. That plan is in place now. And this new half-mile boardwalk is going over Beaver Dam to utilize the property.
So this, hold on, this is select person airs, select person's report, right?
Right, so, but basically to clarify, I'll give you more feedback at a different time, George.
You look at me all you want. It's his report. If you want to, if there's an item, Bailey, select person Bailey, if there's an item you would like to take up with him on it. Please take it up outside of here. This is a report out. You're more than welcome to take up any item you have as a concern and raise it so that he can address it appropriately. Between South, the Conservation Commission. And whatever other department it needs to be, but this is his report out at this time. This is his time to report out to the board what's going on.
Thank you. Select person Mantrack.
You have the budget committee report. We haven't had a school board and the budget committee meet tomorrow. We've not been in a meeting of the. First station.
Thank you, select person Bailey.
I have enough for the report.
Tomorrow is the planning board meeting. I do not intend to be at the planning board meeting. I let Barbara know that today. Because I intend to be at the. The candlelight vigil tomorrow evening. For officer, for, for staffs, for police staff sergeant Cheryl. So. It is at the B Y A at seven o'clock tomorrow evening at field, at the A field. Final public comment.
Since our in-person audience has retired for the evening, if there's anybody.
Dwindled.
Let's just go with dwindled.
I mean, retired. They have retired.
If there's anybody participating virtually that would like. Raise your hand or enter a comment into the chat feature. Let the chair know you'd like to speak. If you're on a phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Speak up, I can tell you by the chair.
Seeing none at this time, I'll close the public comments. The wise guy in me wanted to say that as soon as you finished talking. But it's been a long, long day. We do not have it on public this evening, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I hope we adjourn.
I'll second it. Roll call vote.
I'm staying.
Mantrack aye.
Napa. Thank you very much and everyone have a good evening.